When everybody can sit. Ready?
Be couple.
We're good?
Everybody ready?
Now, our PM Chair called this May twenty first twenty twenty four regular call board meeting to order. Madam Clerk, have the public been duly notified? And I do confirm a quorum. Chair, we act with a motion going to executive session for personnel matters.
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
I make a motion we enter executive session for personnel matters.
Second such motion.
Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Dr. Harry, going to executive session for personnel matter. All in favor, show by raising of the right hand. Ms. Green, we gonna give your pass on that. That would be seven zero to go in executive session for personnel matters. We won't be in long. Uh, we should be back before, I know before six thirty. Thank you and we'll see ya when we get back. Chair, we act for motion to exit executive session, no action taken.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion we exit executive session, no actions taken.
Second such motion.
Motion by Ms. Harrison, second by Dr. Harris to exit executive session, no action taken. All in favor show by raising the right hand. That would be seven zero. I just at this time I would like to. Hallelujah. At this time, I'd like to welcome everyone to our May twenty first, twenty twenty four regular call board meeting. We thank you for your support, your parents. It takes a village to raise a child and all of you are important, not just the teachers, not just the principal, not just the bus drivers, custodians, the maintenance workers, it's it's all of us. And we do appreciate you for your support in the school district and raising our children. At this time, we'll we'll have the flagrant of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and because of the republic for which we stand, one is from our government, there's another one, but they're the ancestors of our. They remain standing for a moment of silence. Amen.
At this time. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make the motion we approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
Urged by Ms. Harrison and second by Mr. Davis to prove the agenda as presented. All in favor show by raising of the right hand. That would be seven zero. Public comment, any public comments, Sabre?
I have any.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we have recognition presentations. Time from South Carolina School Board Association, School Board Service award to Pastor Carl Jackson, Jr. If you will read it, Dr. Green.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I am so excited and privileged to have the honor to recognize Pastor Jackson for ten years of service. As you know, I am wrapping up my twelfth year as superintendent. And so Pastor Jackson has been with me for most of this journey. And I'd like to publicly say thank you for being an outstanding board member. Pastor Jackson, this comes from the School Board Association. Dear Reverend Jackson, congratulations on achieving ten years of school board service for Fairfield County School District. On behalf of the officers and staff of the South Carolina School Board Association, thank you. You have played a critical role in guiding your district and have invested countless hours to improve public education. South Carolina School Board Association is happy to be a part of this recognition by providing a lapel pin for you to wear at school board and and SCASB events and a certificate. Your name and years of service will also appear in the annual convention program. What an accomplishment you have made. Again, congratulations. And if anyone at the South Carolina School Board Association can be of assistance to you in any way, do not hesitate to give us a call. Executive Director Scott Price will join me in giving Pastor Jackson a round of thanks.
On that, it's good.
Pastor Jackson has a pin and he has two. And I would pin him, but I don't want to stick it. Miss Harris, that's going to be a lot. If you think it's all right.
All right. It's time to South Carolina Principal. I mean, secondary principal of the year. Doc, Dr. Stacy Sweller. You know how I've seen that thing, Sweller. Now, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, I I tell you what, this is is truly a proud moment. Dr. Swilly joined the Fairfield County School District family after my first year here. And so while this is my twelfth year, this is her eleventh year as principal of Fairfield Central High School. She has been absolutely invested in this community. Not only did she come here and assume the role as principal, she brought her son here who will graduate from Fairfield Central High School this year. She brought her daughter here, who will be a freshman at Fairfield Central High School this year. And and as a former high school principal, I know that's almost a twenty-four seven job. I mean, there's something going on at the school all the time. And and I can always count on Dr. Swilly being there. This past weekend, Dr. Swilly called me as I was preparing for the gala to tell me that we about to win the boys track championship. But that's just indicative of the kind of investment that she makes. And so the parents have no doubt, and I see this as a former parent of three daughters who have graduated from Fairfield Central High School, that she cares about their best interests. And as much as we want someone who has the technical knowledge to be successful as a principal, we want someone who has the heart of our young people, that they care about them, not only as students, but as people. Not only is Dr. Swiller being recognized as the SCASA High School Principal of the Year, she was recently notified that she is the South Carolina Association of Black School Educators High School Principal of the Year. And so she is racking up the awards right now and she will also compete at the national level as she represents South Carolina as High School Principal of the Year and will represent us in the national competition also. So I could not be more proud as superintendent that Dr. Swiller is being recognized for the absolutely phenomenal job that she has done as principal.
Let's kind of hand again for. Now, Dr. Swiller, before you sit down, Dr. Green, the board want to take a picture with you. If that's all right, come on, boy.
Right, Dr. Hemingway. Come on, John. Probably have to leave the office.
All right, beautiful. At this time, student recognition from the State Beta Club Convention winners, Dr. Avery.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Miller, Board of Trustees, along with Dr. Green. We are proud to recognize our Beta Scholars who participated in the State Beta Club Convention from Kellin Miller Elementary, Giger Elementary, Fairfield Middle School, and Fairfield Central High School. If Dr. Green, along with the principal Kathy Woodard from Kellin Miller, along with the sponsors, if you could come forward for the recognition. Our sponsors for Kellin Miller are Deborah Cowser, Mr. Vernon Huggins, and Ms. Jena Rhett Stratton. Students from Kellin Miller will receive recognition and a certificate for the following areas, starting with Amir Little. He received first place in 3D design, second place in drawing, and third place in small group performance dance. Bre'jon Sutton, first place in 3D design, third place small group performance dance, and third place in woodworking. Savannah Knott earned third place, small group performance dance, and fifth place, fourth grade ELA. Nala Chappelle, third place, small group performance dance, and the Golden Ticket Award for Premier Performer for Elementary. Travanna Pearson, third place, small group performance dance. London Curly, third place, small performance dance. Carter Evans, third place, small group dance.
Oh, man, he he sharp, man. Ain't he got with them Jordans on or what?
Hy-Lynn Jackson's third gr- third place, small group performance dance. Alfonso Martinez, third place, small group performance dance. And Mikel Woodard, third place, small group performance dance. And this concludes our recognition for the Kellin Miller Scholars. Okay.
Yeah. Kellin Miller, right.
Next, we have Giger Elementary. The sponsors are Sharnelle Hemp Hill, Elvis Good, Dr. Asia Jones, Tiara Perker Perkins, and Dr. Crystal Crystal Perkel, Kristen Perkel, and the principal is Roberta Hayward. Large group performance winners, Asa Lynn Sampson. Nacia Qualls. Marley Baker. Denija Smith. And I so apologize for mispronouncing her name. Mariah McLeod. Chloe Joseph. Harper Robinson. Avery Robinson. Amaria Davis. Asia Sampson. Hannah Thomas. Urban Walker. Ellington Hayward. Kennedy Brunson. Carson Adams. The next category is jewelry in the Ju- Junior Division, Jade Green, third place. We got about four more. T-shirt competition, fourth place, Jaleah Cole. Amir Pickney. Braylin Brunson. And Carmen Brown. Fairfield Middle School, Dr. Brandon Dixon, principal. Club sponsors are Denitra McElrav, Dr. Rolando Carrabo, Tammy Armstrong, and Dr. Kayanne Yarborough. Fifth place, digital art, Kylie Curly. First place in small group dance category, Aleah Tribble. Damiya Banks. Cecilia Sanders. And Kendall Nance.
There you go, sister.
We will recognize Fairfield Central High School. And their group was so large, we put them in the overflow room. And Dr. Swilly is going to come forward to announce and recognize her students.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, first up, we have a number of students. They all competed in several different categories, so we're just going to call them alphabetically and call what they were recognized in. Jordan Adams for Show Choir, first place at the state convention. I could see, let's do my advisors, I'm sorry. Ms. Shannon Taylor, Lead Advisor. Assisting her, she has Mr. Byron Dixon, Ms. Sierra Cyrus, Ms. Veronica Thomas, Timothy Bryant, yes. All right, next up, Tavitra Mponza for Showcase, first place, 12th Grade Biomedical, second place. Jamaria Anderson for Third Place Group Talent. Jamaria Anderson, first place for Third Place Group Talent. You want me to call the names of her name? Call them anywhere, okay. I'll go back, yes. Tyus Armstrong for the Group Talent, third place. Kayden Belton for Musicology, third place. Kingston Belton for D1 Drawing, third place, and Show Choir, first place. Lily Breeden. For Campaign Skits, second place, D1 On-Site Painting, second place, and Show Choir, first place. London Broom, Show Choir, first place. We also have cheer tryouts today, so we have a number there. Cornella Brown, D2 Jewelry, third place, Group Talent, third place. Kendall Burns, third place, Group Talent. Abinai Burrell for Robotics, second place, Service Learning Showcase, first place, and Show Choir, first place. The Princess Bird for Group Talent, third place. Cadence Coleman, D2 Hand-Drawn Enemy, second place, Musicology, third place. Show Choir, first place, Nehemiah Davis. William Dawkins for Robotics, second place, as well as Group Talent, third place. Kenzie Douglas, Group Talent, third place. Chase Douglas, Service Learning Showcase, first place. Eddie English, Show Choir, first place. Nala Evans, Show Choir, first place. Megan Ford, Group Talent, third place. Mariana Franklin, Group Talent, third place. Candice Green, Campaign Skits, second place, Group Talent, third place, Musicology, third place, Show Choir, first place, 12th Grade French, second place. Kinsley Green, newly named the 2024-2025 State Vice President, Service Learning Showcase, first place, and D2 Drawing, first place. Jalen Hawkins, Show Choir, first place. Alexia Hernandez, 12th Grade Spanish, third place, D2 Mixed Media, second place. Ashley Hill, Show Choir, first place. Eddie Hopkins, 12th Grade Social Studies, third place. Parker Jones, Show Choir, first place. Hamari Joseph, Robotics, second place. Deasia Kennedy, Group Talent, third place. Star Asia McCurklin, Group Talent, third place. Adrian McMillan, Robotics, second place. Caitlin Morgan, 2D Design, first place. Christopher Murphy, Robotics, second place. Rashid Milwaukee, Campaign Skits, second place. Krishi Patel, 10th Grade Math, first place. Daniel Perez Flores, 10th Grade Social Studies, second place, and Robotics, second place. Janaya Perry, Campaign Skits, second place, Group Talent, third place, and Show Choir, first place. Carla Pickett, Show Choir, first place. Adriana Pickney, Service Learning Showcase, first place, and Show Choir, first place. Fiona Rose, Campaign Skits, second place, Musicology, third place, and Show Choir, first place. 10th Grade Spanish, first place, Marco Robles. Alyssa Simmons, Group Talent, third place. Christina Smallwood, Campaign Skits, second place, Group Talent, third place, Show Choir, first place, Solo Duo Trio Dance, category, second place. Jalen Swilly, Group Talent, third place. Iden Tinwell, Group Talent, third place, Show Choir, first place. Raven Trapp, Campaign Skits, second place, Group Talent, third place. Ruben Tucker, Group Talent, third place. Kanaya Turner, Show Choir, first place. Tiana Turner, Group Talent, third place. Elasia Williamson, Show Choir, first place. And we would like to recognize Alvin Wilson, outgoing 23-24 South Carolina State President, as well as Show Choir, first place. Ally Wright for Service Learning Showcase, first place, Show Choir, first place. And last but not least, Denaya Young, Campaign Skits, second place, Group Talent, third place.
They're going to put you all in the back quick. You in there with... Carla here.
Yeah, there's tall guys in the back.
Tall guys in the back.
Everybody find the window, yes?
I know they can't see. Yeah, don't cover your face. They're taking pictures. Bring it down from your face.
Okay, okay, okay. Next person, supposed to be Staff Recognition, Power School. Which school?
Chairman Miller and members of the board, we're waiting for the Power School clerks to arrive from the overflow room. Earlier this year, I issued a challenge to the ladies who are now walking in to earn their front office certification in Power School. And when I challenged them, I told them that they would be recognized at one of our board meetings. So tonight, I wanted to celebrate them for going the extra mile and earning their Power School certification. We're going to start tonight first with Carolyn Austin from Fairfield Central High School. Michelle Brown. Sharon Cook from Fairfield Elementary School. Shamika Cornelius from Fairfield Magnet School for Math and Science. Darlene Davis from Gordon Odyssey Academy. Grover Harris from Giger Elementary School. And Grover, I think you're the longest-serving employee in the district, correct? And that's a proud, that's a proud achievement, Ms. Grover. Demetria Peoples from Macquarie Liston School of Technology. Monica Simmons, who is our District SIS Coordinator, Student Information System Coordinator. Regina Swan from Fairfield Middle School. Courtney Williamson-Holly. And last but certainly not least, Yvonne Young from Fairfield Central High School.
Dr. Avery, you want to come and get in this picture? You know, we have some amazing students. We have some amazing parents. We have some amazing, as you can see, Power School clerks, however they pronounce. I just know they do an outstanding job. And so, thank you to everyone that was recognized tonight and the ones that was recognized the last board meeting. At this time, we're going to... We get a motion for approval of the Regular Call Board meeting, April 16, 2024.
It's chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion, we accept the superintendent recommendation to approve the minutes from the April 16 Regular Call Board meeting.
Second motion. Motion made by Ms. Harrington, second by Dr. Harris to accept the superintendent recommendation to approve the minutes from the April 16, 2024 Board meeting, Regular Call Board meeting. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be 7-0. At this time, we're going to hear our superintendent report. Dr. Green.
First of all, let me acknowledge four young ladies, well, at least three of the four, I think, were here a minute ago. Candice Green, Kinsley Green, Tavitra Mponza, and Carla Pickett. They represented the state of South Carolina at the National Economics Competition in Cleveland, Ohio. And so, they won the state-level award. And as a result, they represented the state of South Carolina. In fact, I was asking Candice, when did they get back? Because I thought they were still in Cleveland. And she said, must've got back about noon today. So they flew up and competed. I've not heard anything about how the competition went, but it is truly an honor just to be in the number of representing South Carolina. So they had to win the state-level award to go and compete at the national level. So I wanted to recognize those four young ladies. And I, you know, as I looked at it, Mr. Miller, and I saw that there were no guys in the number. I thought to myself, the fellas got to step their game up a little bit because these ladies are taking over, I mean, in every aspect. Even when I was there for my celebration, Dr. Swilly, and I looked at the outstanding JRTC, they escorted me throughout the building. And I said, where the brothers? I mean, yeah, the brothers got to step their game up because the ladies are stepping their game up. And so, we give them kudos for that outstanding job. The most exciting time of the year. The time that we all prepare for, the time that we all get excited for, the time that we all shooting for. Graduation.
Oh, yeah.
And so, graduation is upon us. I think we're scheduled to start bright and early, 8:30 in the morning, am I correct, Dr. Swilly? Not 8:31, 8:30. We plan to be moving forward with graduation, and that'll be not this Saturday, but the next Saturday. So put that on your calendar. We are very excited about celebrating all of the wonderful accomplishments of our young people as they prepare to move on for the next phase of their journey. And so, I saw several seniors in this Beta Club group who are being recognized. And I know they are excited about moving on to college, military work. So we want to be there to help them celebrate. So put that on your calendar for two Saturdays from now. Let me recognize the boys and girls track program.
I'm on there.
You know, as I said earlier, Dr. Swilly called me and said that we about to win the boys' state championship in track. And your basketball coach had predicted that. Tyrell Manning, I want to give Tyrell a shout out because Tyrell ended up traveling to Washington DC on the Boaty Club trip. And Tyrell was on the phone the whole time the track meet was going on for the upstate championship. And so, Tyrell said, shoot, we just won the upstate championship, and we going to win the state championship. And Tyrell spoke about it as if it were already a foregone conclusion. And apparently, Tyrell knew exactly what he was talking about because we did win the boys' state championship. So I want to share some data from that. Overall, we had a total of 14 top-eight finishers, which led to a score of 83 points. Our girls finished third overall, and the girls had a total of eight top-eight finishes for a score of 59 points. So, you know, I don't want to diminish the outstanding accomplishment of the girls because they came in third, and if you know anything about track, it's based on points. I'm not sure, we had but about eight or 10 girls. And so, six, okay, I gave us more we had. So to finish third with six girls, when other people might have brought 36... So to finish third with six girls, when other people might have brought thirty-six girls, is, is a remarkable accomplishment. And the only way you can finish third is you gotta win a bunch of races. I mean, so you gotta get a bunch of points, and so let's give both of them round of applause. Let, let me highlight a, a, a few of the, the top finishers. Jayden Boyd, uh, who's only a sophomore. Uh, Jayden finished first in the one-hundred meter, two-hundred meter, and long jump. As a sophomore, so Jayden, uh, obviously is gonna have a bright future. Jamie Brown finished fifth in the four-hundred meter, seventh in the two-hundred meter. Tydarian Greer finished third in the one-hundred meter. Christian Hingleton finished eighth in the one-ten hurdles. Christian Golden finished fifth in the long jump and third in the high jump. Jalen Swilly finished fifth in the shot put. And let me give Jalen another shout out because he just won the WLTX Player of the Year, uh, for the state of South Carolina. Um, Hank White finished first in the eight-hundred meter and eighth in the sixteen-hundred meter. Uh, in the boys' four-by-one hundred, Chris Jackson, Jamie Brown, Chris Pearson, and Tydarian Greer finished second. And then the boys' four-by-four hundred, Nate Brown, Hank White, uh, Kenyon Douglas, and Jamie Brown finished in second place. Katrelle Moore finished fifth place in the four-hundred meter. Uh, Essence Terry London finished fourth place in the one-hundred meter and second in the two-hundred meter. In the girls' four-by-one hundred, Essence Terry London, Katrelle Moore, Brittany Mack, and Charmel Holmes finished first place. Uh, in the girls' four-by-four hundred, uh, Katrelle Moore, Alia, Alia Delary, and Brittany Mack finished seventh place, and Charmel Holmes, who has, uh, Dr. Swilly says she's gonna have Charmel take a picture of a goat with a goat, all right, where she is. The goat, uh, might be the, uh, all-time most decorated track athlete in the history of Fairfield Central High School. It'll be hard to argue that she's not. Uh, Charmel Holmes finished first in the one-hundred meter, first in the two-hundred meter, and first in the long jump. The state of South Carolina, all right, yeah. And on top of that, Charmel just got her degree from Billings Technical College a couple of weeks ago, and she is one of the STEM or the College Academy students. So she's getting it done in many respects. Uh, just looking at some school records set at this meet, Hank White, uh, boys' eight-hundred meter run with a time of one minute and fifty-seven seconds, fifty-seven minutes, fifty-nine seconds, uh, that is smoking, okay? So Hank, uh, put in the work, uh, and it paid off. And you know, at any point in time, uh, I can go out to the track and I'll see Hank out there running. Uh, I mean, Hank is a, a true testament that hard work produces results. Uh, and, and as they used to say when I was coach, uh, hard work beat talent when talent don't work hard.
Right.
Okay, and so Hank truly put in the work, and so he was rewarded by that by setting, uh, a new record. Jayden Boyd is the boys' hundred, one-hundred meter dash with a time of ten-fifty-one. So Jayden has set a new record. As I mentioned, Jayden is only a sophomore, uh, so we know that there are some big things to come from him. Uh, and the girls' four-by-one hundred, uh, Essence Terry London, Katrelle Morgan, Brittany Mack, and Charmel Holmes set a new record, time of forty-eight point seventeen seconds. Uh, and last but certainly not least, Charmel Holmes now, Charmel Holmes now owns the all-time South Carolina record. Let me say that one more time. Okay, I didn't say Fairfield Record, I didn't say Winsboro. I said the all-time South Carolina record for high school girls in the one-hundred meter and the two-hundred meter. Charmel's one-hundred meter time of eleven forty-five currently ranks twenty-first in the nation. Two-hundred meter time of twenty-three point five-three currently ranks twenty-ninth in the nation. And so when we think about that in context, okay? Of all the people running the one-hundred and two-hundred across the country, that's a lot of people, folks. That's a lot of people for Charmel to be, uh, twenty-first and twenty-ninth respectively, uh, is a tremendous accomplishment. Let's give all of them a round of applause. Uh, let me give you an update on the Teacher Village. Uh, if you've not kind of taken a little peek in the back behind the district, district office, uh, construction is on the way. I mean, I went back there today, they were pouring the foundations, uh, for all the homes. Uh, they had the trussels out there preparing to go ahead and establish the, um, the framing of those buildings. And so, uh, we are excited that come August, uh, we are gonna have at least sixteen homes for teachers, um, in August. Um, the, the first phase has already been assigned, uh, and so those applications went out, they were notified. Uh, who is receiving one of those first-phase homes? I think yesterday, uh, is when they were notified. Um, we have still a waiting list of probably, uh, so we assigned houses to about sixteen people. We probably got another sixteen people on the waiting list, okay? And so, uh, there's most certainly a demand, and so it's our job as a foundation now to figure out how we continue to build out, uh, this, uh, tremendous, uh, community. Uh, I think this is going to be a model, uh, for communities all across the country uh, as they have done in many respects, are going to be coming to Fairfield County, uh, to watch how we doing, okay? Um, I've gotten many calls from the media asking me, when can they come back out? Um, some want to come out when teachers are ready to move in, some want to come out, uh, to watch the building process. Uh, and so we're excited to continue to get this kind of coverage locally, and I think ultimately we are going to get national coverage uh, because this is truly a one-of-a-kind initiative. So we're so excited to be leading the way. And then let me thank the School Board of Trustees, uh, for, um, for really believing in this vision. Uh, really for endorsing, uh, this vision, uh, as much as people said it would not come to fruition, and it would not happen. Uh, and there were delays and there were stops, um, uh, but just because it is delayed doesn't mean it's denied, okay? And so, uh, we are at the finish line now, and so, uh, very excited about that. Um, I, I know the individuals who were selected are excited that, um, that they were in the number. I'll tell you, I've gotten emails consistently, uh, from some teachers asking me, what y'all waiting on? I mean, they, they let people know, and so we, we finally were able to let them know. And so people are gonna be prepared and excited to move in, uh, come August. Um, and then finally, uh, just let me say, um, that last week was a week that I'll, I'll never ever forget. And, and so I'd like to publicly thank the committee who put together that week of celebration. For me, uh, Jackie and, and Dr. Swilly, uh, and Jalen, uh, and Demetrius and Mr. Robinson, um, uh, and Ms. Brown, uh, they just put together an awesome week. And, and I said during the gala, when I first heard about it, I said, man, y'all ain't gotta do all that. I mean, just let me ease on out the door. Um, but I'm so glad, um, that they did what they did because I tell you, uh, it was, it was truly a heart-touching, uh, experience to go around, uh, the schools, uh, and have those well wishes. Um, it, it, it was a touching moment. If I wasn't such a macho guy, I'm out of here. Um, but I'm much too macho to shed a tear right now, so it was, it, it, it's much, much, much too macho, uh, yeah. But, um, but, but it was truly, it, it was truly a, 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 a touching experience. And, and, and let, let, let me say, um, I, I, I recognize that everybody in the community couldn't necessarily be at the school. Uh, and everyone couldn't necessarily be at the gala. Uh, that was wonderful as well. Um, but I am having a reception at Carolina Event Center on the thirtieth of May, which is next Thursday. Um, and, and at that gala, I'll do, uh, some, some book signings, but it's not just for book signings. I'll do some book signings there, but it's really an opportunity for me, um, to just say thank you uh, to the faculty and staff and the community, uh, for just being wonderful partners, uh, in this journey that we have been on for the past twelve years. Uh, my wife, we, we talked last night, and she, she had already done something saying, I want to put on the website that people should RSVP and let us know how many people come, and so, uh, we'll know how many to tell the K to prepare for. As I'm working RSVP, we gonna tell the K to prepare for a number of people, when the food run out, the food gonna run out. Because people gonna come, and I mean, uh, whether they RSVP it or not, I, I mean, I know how people go do, I mean, so. I'm telling you, whether you want to get a book signed, I don't want to get a book signed, don't worry about no RSVP. If you want to show you get some food, get there early. Because we gonna have a, we gonna have an amount of food, and when the food go, it'll just be good conversation, all right, yeah? So, so everybody put on your calendar the thirty, thirtieth at the Carolina Event Center, uh, and it'll just be a drop-in from four to seven. Don't have to be there at four, you come anytime you want, uh, but just an opportunity, uh, to really say thank you to the community and everybody, uh, to really share their, their farewell. Um, half of the whole green, uh, contingency, uh, let, let me thank, uh, the Board of Trustees, um, uh, for just being outstanding partners. Uh, I tell people I got the best school board, uh, that anyone could ask for, um, and so I appreciate all you have done. Uh, thank the faculty and staff, uh, thank the, um, uh, the students and parents and the community. Uh, this has just been a, an awesome experience. And, uh, Mr. Miller, I, I, I jokingly said to someone that I've heard so many good things about me over the last week. I'm going to the doctor tomorrow because that may mean Lord might call me home.
Oh, oh, that is.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, my, my brother said that, he said, yeah, you know, this is probably your, yeah, your obituary that people getting ready for you. But, uh, but in all, in all seriousness, it is, it, it, it has just been a heart-touching experience, so, uh, thank you, I appreciate that. That, that's all I have, I, 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 I have probably talked more than I needed to, but, you know, I, I got, but maybe another meeting, uh. Oh, no, I'm not, yeah, I'm not done, yeah, yeah, don't rush me, but see, my, my last meet, this may could be coming on my last meet, and I gotta get it all out.
You need to get it, take your time, Doc.
I gotta get it all out.
Kind of rushing.
Everything I gotta say, uh, the knowledge, I'm, I'm tall enough. Summer work hours, I, I have recommended the board approve summer work hours beginning, uh, Monday, what's the date on that, yeah? Uh, June third, Ms. Harrison, uh, Sunday, June, uh, Monday, June third. Um, and thanks to, uh, some adjustments you made in the summer work hours, uh, the time is from, uh, eight to five. My eyes on where they used to be here, summer work hours, eight to five, yeah, eight to five. So I present that to you for your approval.
Get a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the superintendent recommendation for the summer work hours beginning June, Monday, uh, Monday, June third through Friday, July nineteen, twenty twenty-four, eight to five. Full stone Fridays.
I second. Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Pastor Jackson, to accept the superintendent recommendation for summer work hours from eight to five. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. Right, we have that, Dr. Green.
Yeah, and the last thing, um, we want to acknowledge the South Carolina Railroad Museum for their generous gift of two hundred dollars to Fairfield Central High School Beta Club students. Uh, we'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Henry, uh, what's Henry's last name? I was calling him Nigamias, I think it is, but, uh, that Nigamias is correct, okay? Uh, for making that donation on behalf of the Railroad Museum, uh, and the Beta Club students can put that in their account and use that, uh, in any manner, uh, that they see fit. Uh, but it just continues to illustrate, uh, as I have said it for many years, um, it takes the efforts of lots of people, uh, for us to maximize the potential of our young folks. And I appreciate any community organization, any business, uh, we were just at LMSTV celebrating their ten-year anniversary. Um, and, and they've always been big supporters of the system. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Henry and the Railroad, Railroad Museum saying that, hey, maybe it's not, uh, uh, an exorbitant amount of money, uh, but we want to do our part. And so we appreciate people who are willing to do their part, and so we give, uh, the Railroad Museum, uh, a shout-out today uh, for doing their part, uh, to support the young people of this community, in particular Fairfield Central High School. So let's give them a round of applause.
Ms. Seaver, that's all I have right now, I'm turning it over to Dr. Avery there.
The first item under curriculum instruction is the field trip that Dr. Green mentioned in his report. Um, we have four students from Fairfield Central High School to travel to Cleveland, Ohio for the National Economics Competition, and I saw recently that they placed in the top sixteen in the nation.
Wow.
As it relates to their performance there. Uh, the superintendent recommends the board retroactively approve the overnight out-of-state field trip requests for Fairfield Central High School.
Want to get a motion?
Chairman Miller, I'd like to make a motion that we set the superintendent's recommendation for the retroactively approve the overnight out-of-state field trip request for Fairfield Central High.
Second.
Second, okay.
We recommend to approve the twenty twenty-four district.
Retroactive, retroactive overnight.
Motion made, superintendent recommend to approve the overnight out-of-state field trip requested by the Fairfield Central High School. Retroactive.
All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be seven zero. Go ahead, Dr. Avery.
The second item is the second and final reading of Gavin's Law Implementation, and this was, you all approved the first reading back in April, there were no changes to the policy J I C F B, Gavin's Law Implementation for the student, and policy G B E B E, Gavin's Law Implementation for the staff. Both policies, uh, were written and reviewed by the district attorneys, and as stated, the same policy will be used for both the students and the staff. This policy, both policies will go into effect July first, twenty twenty-four.
We get a motion.
Chairman Miller.
Yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we set the superintendent's recommendation for the final approval of policy J I C F B, Gavin's Law Implementation, student and policies G B E B E, Gavin's Law Implementation, and staff. Vanna, get a second.
Second, that's motion.
Motion made by Ms. Davis, second by Dr. Harry, to approve the superintendent recommendation, second, final reading, the Gavin's policy, G B E B E, Gavin's Law.
All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be seven zero.
The third item is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five District Strategic Plan and School Renewal Plan Updates each and every year. Pardon me, as a board, you approve the annual updates to our district strategic plan along with the school renewal plans, and each plan has been updated to reflect the most recent two thousand twenty-three report card along with, uh, schools had opportunity to update their performance goals and also to update their needs assessment, and they were able to gain stake, stakeholder input, um, from their parents along with their staff members. The recommendation states, the superintendent recommends the board approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five District Strategic Plan and the School Renewal Plan Updates as submitted. and the school renewal plan updates as submitted.
I make a motion, we accept the superintendent recommendation to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five district strategic plan and school renewal plan update. Again.
Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Ms. Green, who set the superintendent recommendation approve twenty twenty-four, twenty-five strategic plan and renewal plan update. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be seven.
And one thing I would like to share with the board, indicated in the side pocket, you will see an overview of our summer academic enrichment programs that will kick off starting on ju- on June fourth and will conclude by July eleventh. All of the schools will post specific information as relates to what summer programs, whether it's summer school or our summer academic programs, those will be posted on the website by next Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Avery.
Mr. Robinson, go right here.
Chairman Miller to the board, Dr. Green. Under Finance and Operations, we have two items this evening. First is the finance report for the month of April. And in that finance report, um everything looks good in terms of our revenues. We are where we should be for this time of year and the expenditures are are in order. So we're looking good as we head towards the end of the year. So if there any questions or comments?
Right here.
Okay. And the second item under Finance and Operations is the second reading of the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So the superintendent is recommending board approval of the second reading of the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget in the amount of forty-six million, nine hundred, forty-seven thousand, four hundred, forty-nine dollars, which includes millage of two hundred and three point one mils.
We get a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion, we accept the superintendent recommendation to approve the uh approve the second reading of the FY budget, um twenty twenty-four budget in the amount of forty-six million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand and four hundred and forty-nine dollars, which includes millage of two hundred and point one, two hundred and three point one.
A second.
Motion paid by the second by Mr. Davis. Don't call questions, I got a question.
I know the answer, but there's no millage increase?
No, ma'am, there's no millage increase. No, you are correct.
Any more questions for Mr. Robinson? No millage increase.
Millage increase.
Everything is catered for.
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Mr. Davis, to accept the superintendent recommendation for the second reading of FY budget of the amount of forty-six million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand and four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Uh includes no millage increase. So all in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Chairman Miller.
Sir.
If I if I could just make uh two points. Number one, cause that this question has come up. Uh the bonuses are included in the budget. And so sometimes people say, what, we heard you aren't doing bonuses. The bonuses are in the budget. Uh and and a salary increase uh is in the budget as well, okay? So I wanted to make note of those two points. Back on now, soon as I can get it back up. Human resource. I was waiting on you. What, what, Ms. Robinson, what you waiting on?
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman and members of the board, under HR this evening, we have the following items for your approval. Item one, certified resignations and terminations. Recommended action, the superintendent recommends the board approve certified educator resignations, terminations to be effective at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year as outlined in Exhibit One.
Get a motion.
Chair, I make a motion, we accept the superintendent recommendation to approve certified educator resignation, terminations to be effective at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four academic year.
A second.
Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Mr. Davis, accept superintendent recommendation to approve certified educator resignation, termination, effective conclusion of twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be seven zero.
Next, we have item two, certified recommendations. The superintendent recommends the board approve professional certified administrators and educators for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year as presented in Exhibit Two A, Two B, and Two C.
Get a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion, we accept the superintendent recommendation to approve professional certified administrators and education educators for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five academic year in Exhibit um Two A, Two B, and Two C.
A second.
Motion paid by the second by the superintendent recommendation to approve the professional certified administrator and educators for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year. That was A. Two A, Two B, and Two C. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. That would be seven zero. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Robinson.
This time we have our um board chair report. Let me, let me uh first start off by just thanking uh everyone. It has been a week for uh for Dr. Green. I tell you, it was was outstanding. And uh, Doc, you deserve everything you you've gotten this past uh this past on last week and continue to. Um let me say this right here, that uh we have some graduations, we have some promotion. So all board members, let's look at, Ms. Brown has sent them out. And if we can make it, let's let's make sure we try to make it to to uh young people graduation. And of course, we know that we wanna be at the at the high school on June the first at eight o'clock, okay? Uh secondly, uh let me, let me, let me give a shout out to the Blair community for Blair Day.
It was great.
Huh? Y'all missed it. Y'all must have missed it. Look here. Dr. Hemingway showed up, Doc. He was weighing about about one ninety. When he left, he was weighing two twenty. He ain't so much. Oh, we fed him. We we told him, he said, we gotta stay away from y'all folks out there. We ain't nothing but some country folks. We believe in just enjoying ourself and eating and, you know, so so we had a good time, the fellowship. You know, and that's what it's all about, uh you know, uh just just Fairfield County period. So we had some folks from everywhere and we really had a good time. We're looking for uh forward to some uh some more good times, okay? Also, this weekend, uh we have uh Memorial Day weekend uh at uh McCurry Liston seventieth year reunion. They're coming back to McCurry Liston, seventy years at McCurry Liston, so uh start, just stop by if you're in town, not going out there. Just say hey to some of the folks over there. And the the Eagles, you know, and they they got a rich history at McCurry Liston, you know. Cause it it was one of the schools that went from first grade of kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade at one school level. You know how we used to do it in our rural schools? We called them country schools. You know, so that's that's definite. They're, so they're coming back uh uh this year. Also, uh just some some things that we wanted to uh actually uh recognize. This board is proud to win and support all the recognition awards that was to the Fairfield County School District and students and staff. We are proud of ourselves to be successful in addition to many accolades issued and to two individuals deserving recognition for their quest for excellence through teamwork. These two individuals have set the bar for others to follow. On behalf of the dynamic Board of Trustees, we would like to recognize and standing congratulations to Dr. Tony Hemingway, S C S C A S A Personnel Administrator of the Year. Clap your hands for Dr. Hemingway. We're gonna go to the front, we're gonna present this, come on. We go, yeah, we gonna come back with Doc. Come on, boy.
Okay, come on, boy.
Hemingway, Minister of the Year from the Board of Trustees. Come on, let's see. Don't just wait, you gotta wait on him. Be hold, you gotta wait on him. Be hold, Ripley Jackson, holding on all of it. He move fast. We talking like the whole state.
Yeah.
Oh, alright, yeah, yeah. Alright, why we, yeah, you, it's no need to go back. And and to Dr. J R Green receiving the lifetime achievement award from the S C A S A in South Carolina. Clap your hands for Dr. J R Green. Two presented, two presented. That's awesome, right there. We well recognized in the state of South Carolina. Wow. Awesome, right there. See, Dr. Hemingway, we fooled you then. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't know we were gonna recognize. You see, you just thought clothes was gonna recognize. You see, we show you, we show you some love down here in Fairfield County. Ain't that right, Ms. Wood? We show you some love down here. Oh, yeah, Dr. Hemingway, Dr. Green. Alright, so I uh let me uh, got anything else to say? Let me sit here.
Yeah, I done said it, no.
Okay, alright. You say, now, Ms. Seaver tried to shut you down, Doc. You know what I'm saying? He tried to shut you down, but uh right, that's uh, that's awesome, right there. Man, that's, that's awesome. Appreciate that. That's real nice. Anyway, Ms. Ms. Harrison?
Yes, um again, I want to say, Dr. Green, it has pleasure and honor working with you. Um my interview for the South Carolina School Board Association for the Regional Director is set for June eighteenth. Um so I hope all goes well on that one. Um and last Friday, I gave my first set of scholarships, um two to Richard Wade in the amount of five hundred dollars each. On next Wednesday, I will award nine at Fairfield Central in the amount of five hundred dollars each. Um the last day to donate the pack of trunk is Saturday and we have been receiving all kind of goodies for these kids to go off to college. I want to thank the high school, Ms. Swinley and the um um her staff, or hopefully we have all the names put in the hat. So it's gonna be a random drawing and I said that they must be present to put their names in a hat. And that's the only way they're gonna get this big old trunk. And our Juneteenth celebration is set for June fifteenth. Um and we looking for another um big parade on June the fifteenth. And I also want to give a shout out to my grandson, my first, my only grandson, will be graduating on Tuesday.
Alright, man.
From Ridgeview, he tried to come to Fairfield, but Dr. Green wouldn't let him, stayed with him. He say he didn't want no more kids, but I I think he settled in at Ridgeview, he did very well. Um he he got a lot of awards. I went to his scholars um program. He's in the magna program, was thirteen kids. They have already received over two million dollars. They have taken a hundred and forty-eight AP classes. So he's done very well and he decided that he's gonna leave July the eighth to start taking his classes before football season. So that was a wise decision on his part. So we make sure he get his work done. Um but make sure y'all get your applications in for the Juneteenth celebration. The slots for the festival is going pretty fast. I already asked Mr. Miller about doing some, the little, he think he got the famous icy things. But anyway, uh the slots are going fast and we look forward to another great celebration. So I hope, you know, many of y'all can attend.
Alright, awesome. Got anything, yeah? Beautiful, thank you. Anybody else got anything else?
Uh Chairman Miller.
Yes, sir.
Uh as you know, last Friday, uh we hosted our very first sensational seniors uh event with the Council on Agency and it was a big success. Uh Dr. Hemingway, Dr. Green, some others came out. Uh first of all, I just wanna thank the county for their support. I want to thank all the elementary schools for their cards. Um we presented them with cards from each elementary school. Uh I want to thank Dr. Swidely, Dr. Dixon for providing the chorus, the orchestra, as well as the Beta Club. Like Dr. Green always say, it's about giving our kids that exposure. And uh when they was there, they were very thankful and grateful to have the opportunity to uh serve those seniors. Matter of fact, they were so helpful that the people that was on staff really didn't even have to do nothing. They just stepped in and did what they supposed to do. Uh we were able to feed over four hundred people.
Wow.
It was a big event. It was very successful. They excited about doing it next year. Um so we looking forward to that. Um as speaking of graduation, next Thursday, we'll be feeding the graduating class at the rehearsal around about ten o'clock, I believe, ten thirty, eleven at the latest. But I'm inviting all board members, staff, if they wanna come up, help out anything anymore, then welcome to be a part of that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Right. Uh now at this time, we are, we are have the motion to uh we entertain a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five board meeting schedule. And we have uh this, my, my computer didn't went out.
We need to make another.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion, we approve the um twenty-four, twenty-five board meet schedule.
A second.
Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Mr. Davis, to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five uh board meeting schedule. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. Right. Um we would have a approval of uh let me make sure I see this right here, right? Requesting renaming the facility of McCurry Liston School of Technology. I guess it was uh hallway as well as the uh gymnasium. And so uh you know, I'm bringing that to the board. Uh one of the things that wanted to talk about was that uh we had and so of renaming any schools. And so uh in saying that, I want, boy, we we can, we can talk about it, but the policy has been in saying that, I want, boy, we, we can, we can talk about it, but, uh, the policy has been, uh, suspended. Now, we can come back and revisit it at a later time. And then, you know, because they, they definitely have two, uh, two people are very rewarding. I would think they would be very rewarding. But it's time, it's time I want to bring this to the board. And we can, Mr. Seabrooks?
Sir. Okay, thank you.
So you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So you saying the, the policy suspended, so we actually can
Right.
approve that tonight. So we have to probably table it until, okay?
Till we get, we revisit it.
Yeah.
As well as we just got the, the policy on, uh, and we just got the request passing. You know, and that's just, that's just, that's just a short, you know, short period. And, and so, but I, I just want them to know, we, we brung it to the table and we will, we are gonna go back and, and revisit our, our, our policy. And once we get it, uh, straightened, they can bring the names back. Uh, what do y'all think? What the board thinks about that?
Table it.
Does.
Table it. Table it, Chairman Miller, uh, because we, we need some time to look at the policy as well as, um, you know, look at the document as well. Um, so, you know, the board can de- determine how much time we need to, to, before we can revisit it, whether we're gonna do it in the next meeting or it's tabled to a later date. But I, I think that it should be tabled until we have an opportunity to explore what the options are.
Do we need a motion to, uh, table it, uh? We just, we just, we just, just table it. Okay. I just want to make sure we're on legal terms. And at this time, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion made by Ms. Harrison, second by Pastor Jack to adjourn. All in favor, show by the raising of the right hand. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.